So as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the vice chair of the Newbury Planning Board, serving tonight as the acting chair at the request of the Chair Larry. Excuse me, permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Here.
Woody Knight.
He's walking in the room as you ask.
Perfect. Mary Stone.
Yeah.
Scott Inter.
Here.
Scott Manjo, Steve Manjo, I'm sorry, Steve.
Here.
All right, town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Tom Planner.
Here.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner.
Yeah.
Great. Anticipated speakers presenters on the agenda, please respond the affirmative. Steve Sawyer, GM two, Inc.
Here.
Great, Steve. Gage Foley.
I didn't see him. I didn't see him log on. He might be.
Okay, great. William Henney and Associates LLC.
Here, he's muted.
Okay, Mike just. Okay, Bill, thank you.
Sorry, I'm not too quick with my my mouse, but I am hearing. Mike is going to join us on the phone. But I think he'll probably join us a little bit later, given the agenda has us on at seven forty-five.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening. This is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid fashion to allow for attendees both remotely and in person, consistent with chapter two of Acts of twenty twenty-three, which extends the governor's March twenty, March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and general law thirty-eight until March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. This order suspends requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location that allows public bodies to meet entirely or partially remotely, so long as any as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening as a hybrid meeting, both in person in the second floor hearing room at twelve Kentway by Field Mass and by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join via Zoom by going to HTTP backslash backslash zoom dot US and entering the meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three zero five six with the passcode of one zero eight seven nine zero or by calling nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating either in person or by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine and at W W T TNT TV dot org and the recording will be available on the Newberry Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants and or the representatives may be called on to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. If they are participating remotely, please state your intention after you have been called. With with regards to ground rules, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to convey some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meaning minutes. As a chair, will that introduce each speaker on the agenda after speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down on the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further for all attendees and participating via Zoom, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with the star six to toggle to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured on the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members was to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comments, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After members have spoken, I I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. For those participants of the assume, I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participants to raise your hand hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by going to more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your keypad. For those participating in person, please raise your hand to request to speak. I will then allow answers and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands. If via Zoom, they will be acknowledged in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and or an address and then ask their question or to make a comment. We will afford the applicant participant or his or her response or his or her representative. The opportunity to reply your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those raised hands. And again, for the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak, should there be any physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns? They will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak. The issues raised have not yet have been addressed. And finally, each vote taken this medium will be conducted of the role call. All right, let's see. I believe we have a public hearing starting at seven fifteen, which is about eight minutes away. So let me just pop over the agenda here for a second. And since we're doing this in a couple of different manners, hopefully we'll be able to coordinate everything. With regards to the first item that we're seeing on the agenda is an A and R submission by Everett Chandler and Martha. Do I understand that this has been withdrawn for tonight?
That's correct. He emailed and requested that we put this off until the next agenda.
Okay, great. Let me pop over here and then let's see. With regards to what we can continue on our agenda, our public hearing will start at seven fifteen. Why don't we just spend a couple of minutes doing liaison reports and the plan is direct report? Let's start with the select board report, if you wouldn't mind, Martha.
Sure, the select board met on April ninth. Main item of business that evening was the they went through and voted their recommendations on all the warrant articles. They also did a review. There's a process underway of reviewing the Wood Ear Agreement and and a Newberry Board had recommended eight items to be reviewed, so they also went through their thoughts and their comments on all of those items.
Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, Larry, do we have a Z B A report by chance?
The they're holding their regular meeting tomorrow night. Pete's pretty full agenda. They've actually got six continued public hearings on the agenda. I won't bother going through all of those because there's nothing that that's likely to come before the planning board. And they also have a project status update for the Pearson Drive forty B project.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, great. Woody, are you with us? Because I.
Yes, Pete, I am.
Beautiful. Woody, what do we have going on with conservation?
Conservation met last night. They had actually a lengthy meeting, two and a half hours. Nothing that pertained to the planning board. It was a staircase on the beach at Blue and a few other items, but nothing that pertained to us.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Martha backed you with M V P C.
M V P C, the commissioners meeting is tomorrow. And mostly general business on the agenda, no special speakers that I remember. And the planners meeting is next Thursday. So.
All right. All right, great. Then let's just slide right into the planning directors' report.
Let's see a few things. Wanted to report on the we've had two drop in office hour sessions for the MBTA communities of Article fourteen on the town meeting warrant. One last Saturday, we had four residents come and spent almost the entire hour and a half talking with them. And we had one resident come yesterday with some questions. We are holding a presentation. Ian Burns will be with us next Wednesday to provide a full presentation information session. Basically, kind of covering covering everything that will be an amalgam of a lot of the presentations that we've had so far for the benefit of anybody who hasn't been able to see those. And then there will be a question and answer period afterwards. So one of the questions for the board members is, do any of you anticipate coming to that meeting?
What did you say?
Whether we should host it as a as a final board meeting or not.
Let's see. Does anyone think they might be going? Mary, do you think you might be going to that?
Oh, I hope they don't know.
Okay, all right, Scott.
No.
Okay, Woody.
It's hit a mess. I I would attend to support, but otherwise I can't say that I'll be there or won't be there fifty fifty.
All right, Larry.
Almost Woody.
Okay, fifty fifty. Steve.
No, I do not intend to.
Okay, all right, so.
No, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I should have meant that.
So Martha, I don't have a clear direction for you right now as to whether you should or should not post it because it's two maybes and maybe three maybes. So with that, I'm open to suggestions, folks.
All right, we are going to, we're going to explore the possibility of broadcasting it live, but at least it will be, if not that, it will be taped up on the YouTube YouTube channel, so.
Well, I suppose if there's a possibility of a quorum present, it wouldn't hurt to post it. And if there's no quorum, then we simply don't have to worry about it.
Perfect.
I would concur with that.
All right, there we go, Martha. There's the direction.
Yeah, that'll do. Yeah, not not too much else. We're getting inquiries about some some applications that may be coming coming our way. But I think nothing, nothing totally solid to report on at this time.
Okay, all right, great. That being the case, why don't we move into just we can do some housekeeping and maybe talk about our meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
All right. Any questions with regards to the March twentieth or any modifications or comments?
I haven't.
No. No.
Okay, I'm good with them.
Great. I entertain a motion to accept the March twentieth minutes.
I move to accept the March twentieth minutes.
Thanks, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Okay, on the motion roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes.
Thank you, Woody.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair of Votes as well. And Steve, you're in favor, I would assume as well.
Oh, yes, then.
Appreciate that. With regards to the April third minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions, comments or discussion on those? I've seen I did accept a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Excellent.
I thank you, Woody. Any discussion? All right, and how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Scott, and how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
All right, the chair that will vote affirmatively as well. Great, thanks. And that brings us right to seven fifteen. So that being the case, I'm going to slide over here for a second so that we can continue our public hearings. So we have a public hearing, which is continued from March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. It's with regards to Seven Bittersweet Lane map U zero nine lot twenty B common driveway special permit applicant owner David W Foley, a senior and Nancy Foley applicant is Gage Foley. So let's see, Martha, can we do a quick little recap on where we are with this process?
Sure. Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So the last session, we talked about there. There had been some changes in ownership of the properties. In particular, Seven Bittersweet had been transferred to to Gage and his wife. But I think some of the trustees and the other properties had changed as well. Anyway, we've gotten updated information regarding ownership of seven, nine and eleven bittersweet. We also noted that in fact, because the work is being on the common driveway itself, the existing common driveway lies on nine and eleven. So we noted the need to actually get authorization from the owners of those two properties for Gage to to get the special permit to do work on those properties. And also needed evidence of Gage's right to use the common driveway, which I assume will actually be written out in the easement agreement. So Steve and Gage, we're going to go back and provide that information, get the easement agreement updated and the easement exhibit. Get those to us. We can make the necessary changes to the decision and the request was then that we send the decision as well as the easement documents to town for review. In the meantime, Steve has provided an updated plan for the portion of the driveway that's actually on seven bittersweet, so perhaps.
All right, is Steve here that he can do a little screen sharing with us for that?
Yes, I'm here and I see Gage is logged logged on also, so I can share my screen.
All right, so can everyone see see this?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, so Gage, actually, he's got that the house is well under construction, framed in, I think clothed the pretty much. I think it might be tight by now. The house moved a little bit. We slid a little bit away from the wetland, which I guess for a resource purposes, that's a that's a plus. Rotated a little bit also. And what as this as the building's gone in and they've kind of rough, they've roughed in this portion of the driveway. And during construction, they actually gravelled in an exit around this way. And Gate, you know, Adam and Gage have been discussing it in this. We're looking to reconfigure this portion, basically the access from the common drive into the house. And this makes very good sense. So you can pull in and just loop around, loop around instead of having to back back out. Previously, there was a turnaround. We had pull in back and then pull out. So this is a change, basically the change how Gage's driveway is going to interact with the common driveway. I think the other the other item is you can see, I'll go back. It might be helped to see how it looked previously. Now, does that jump to the other plan? When I do that, or do I have to stop share and then reshare?
No. It jumped to the other plan.
Okay, great. So you can see previously before it was up on the fifty fifty foot offset. We driveway came in and there was a turnaround. So that was the previous location. The common driveway, I haven't changed this. This is something I'd like to discuss tonight, just to confirm. Everyone is fine with it. So I did not change a common drive. The Gage, he also needs an easement from number nine to access where he crosses number nine to access the lot. So this isn't common driveway. It's just the easement for the benefit of number seven from number nine. So going back to our change. So this line really hasn't changed as we egress into the into the into the garage here. It hasn't changed. What I've done is created an easement area for the benefit of number seven. Increase that area so it includes this entire area. So instead of changing the common drive, that doesn't change. You have the common drive access here. We we change the exclusively or the access easement for the benefit of number seven from nine. The other item is you can see where re there's a section of pavement here that we're going to regrade a little bit. This drops off. It's hard to see. You can kind of see. You can see it's fairly steep grade coming down around as you come down around this corner here. So we're going to lift the grade here by two feet. Roughly two feet. So you end up with a level, a level area here and then grade down slightly to meet the meet the existing grade at the where the Batumina ends at the gravel drive here. So there'll be a little additional reconstruction of this portion of the driveway to regrade. So this is as much smoother smoother transition coming from the common drive and in egressing back. So those are the, you know, that's it. Those are the changes. Like it's luckily, you know, luckily we caught it before we went with any final documents, just so we can capture this and don't have to come back in for a modification. I think we've we've come to a very good spot with it, and this is our final landing spot. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Right. Before I turn to questions from the board members, I just want to refresh everyone's memory with you guys to voting on this. Larry, Woody, Mary, myself will be voting, but everyone is entitled to ask questions on this and please do so. So let me start to see. I go through board members to see if there are any questions. Larry, do you have any questions, sir? All right, I'm going to move to Mary. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, great. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Pete. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Scott, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right, Steve, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All right. And Martha, with regards to the status of the revisions of the easement agreement and the easement exhibit, is there anything else that we need to think about?
Not that I'm aware of. I think it really just needs to be updated to make sure that it appropriately names all the all the parties that are going to be you know, benefited by this this easement.
Okay, great.
Exhibit itself needs to be updated to include this larger easement area.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see this. I jumped to the current easement. So this street, this driveway is at number three will be changed to include this area will include the area where we're running out the enlarged area. So that'll be modified. And we'll make sure we have all the current landowners is will be modified on the exhibit also. And then also with the document, we'll get, I think what makes sense is for Everett to update this and then we send that off. Send it off to Matt so he can Matt Gaines, the attorney, and he can get that final, the final changes made to the easement agreement.
Okay, great. Thanks, Steve. Martha, do you have any questions from the public?
No, no questions from the public. I don't see any raised hands. Couple of questions, actually from me, if that's okay.
Go ahead, please.
Steve, I just want to make sure I I think that this is okay, that the extension of the work that's on the regrading on number nine driveway, that's not inside any of the resource areas, is it?
No, that that's all outside the hundred foot. Yep.
And what about?
Yeah, here's your here's your hundred foot, the hundred foot buffer. So really, this everything here, the extension, the extension of the this, this, all this additional work here is all outside the buffer.
Okay.
And we're actually reducing the impact within the hundred foot buffer by sliding, sliding the building away from it. So we have reduced, we have reduced impacts, which I'm sure can just be handled with the with the C O C.
And do you have any review of this new configuration with the fire department?
I have not really. It's a, this actually would be an improved situation. There's really no, as far as this portion of it really doesn't change as far as the access from the common drive to this portion of the driveway. And then running straight down to number nine. It actually improves, if anything, it improves the situation with the much. It softens the grade when you drop off down to number nine, but we I my feeling is this is a diminutive change. We can, we can provide them a copy and see if they have comment. Show them the change copy and see if they have any comment.
Yeah, it might be might be beneficial to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree, but I don't think I do see it as an improvement. I don't think they'll have an issue. So I think it's it's wise to pass it over to the fire department.
And you could do that through through us if you want, Steve. I don't know if it'd be possible to get a full size paper copy. Sometimes it's easier, you know, for reading purposes to to take a look at that.
Okay, I'll drop off full size, a full size copy.
That would be great. Thank you. And and any any changes to stormwater with any of these?
No, there's no, I didn't make any changes to stormwater. As far as a this didn't change as far as the drip edge running to this point where it stopped prior. And as far as stormwater, this will just naturally sheet flow into the lawn area here. Really is not. It's it's insignificant changes as far as any impermeable area on the lot. And as far as stormwater, the way it's just a single family home, actually, it's exempt from the mass D E P stormwater regs.
Thank you. And I know we do have one one resident here, but I'm not seeing any raised hands.
All right. Thanks very much, Martha. So basically, we just have to wrap this up with the materials that need to be assimilated and sent out to council as well as our decision that we did on the last session of public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Then I would entertain a motion to continue this meeting. So we're going to need to find a date that's going to work. And Mary, do I remember correctly that the first week, the first May first was not going to be possible.
Yes.
Actually, we we wouldn't be ready, but you know, for this to have every get the figure done and get the everything updated and get it in in a timely manner. I would say we the first one we'd be looking at would be the middle, the the second, second, May.
The fifteenth. Yeah, okay, wonderful. Then I would accept a motion to continue this meeting to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven fifteen via Zoom. I think is that? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Ah, thank you. Woody, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks very much, Mary. On the motion, any discussion, Larry? Okay, any discussion, Woody?
No.
Mary, any discussion?
No.
And Scott, any discussion?
I know.
All right, and how do we vote, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, Scott.
Am I allowed to vote on the continuation or?
He's not a voting member.
This is saying.
Scott's not a voting member on this.
That's right. I apologize. Larry, were you able to pipe in on the vote?
Yes.
Great. And I will vote, yes, as well. Scott, thanks very much for for steering the ship correctly here. I appreciate that. All right. Okay, let's see. Then that will bring us to our new business. New business would be Farmview. Okay, thanks. I would be Farmview Lane sixty-eight Green Street. Michael's Michael Dos Santos Crane Properties, a request for release of performance covenant for the Farmview Lane subdivision, also known as a sixty-eight Green Street subdivision and approval of the performance bond. We should note that the release would also includes a release of a lot to from the performance covenant. This would be the last lot to be released, which would necessitate a change on the form of the performance guarantee from a covenant guarantee. Bill, would you like to speak on where we are with this right now for Mike?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. I do know Mike is joining us very shortly on his phone, so he'll jump in during the meeting. So my name is Bill Heaney. I'm an attorney in Beverly, Massachusetts. My office is at eighty-six Dodge Street. I represent Crane Properties LLC. Mike Dos Santos is the principal member of Crane Properties LLC, and he'll be joining us. The definitive subdivision that is before you tonight was approved for the Green sixty-eight Green Street Realty Trust and Eva Jackman. Crane Properties purchased the unimproved subdivision and has been working with the town of Newbury on, on the previous lots. We have two of them already. All, all set. So a little quick history of it, it is, it is a three lot subdivision off of Green Street. The, the road is Farmview Lane. And there's, there's three homes to be built on there. They are in the residential agricultural zoning district for the town of Newbury. And in the past, I've been before this board, in March of two thousand twenty-three, we released lot number one from the covenant to allow them to, to, to sell the home on lot one. And then again, in November of two thousand twenty-three, we released lot number, I'm sorry, number three was, lot number three was released in March of two thousand twenty-three. And then lot number one was released in November of two thousand twenty-three. So I had that in reverse. So we have two, two lots that have, have been released. Lot two is substantially completed as a home and scheduled to close in early May. So we're here before you tonight pursuant to section seven of your Form D covenants. You can release lots as you go along if we met the criteria. This particular request for you tonight is, is the last lot, as you noted. And so that would also be followed up by a release of the performance guarantee that was, was part of the covenants. So we're kind of nearing the end of the process with you here. On April second, we met on the site with Martha, Joe Soraka, who is the town engineer, and Sean Young from the Concom. At that meeting, we reviewed an issue with the puddling where Farmview Lane and Green Street meet. And we also walked the entire site and then we specifically looked at lot number two. So on the entire site, you know, there are some water runoff issues, various issues that were unforeseen at the time the subdivision was approved. And we believe we have a solid action plan to deal with those. The, the puddling at the end of Farmview Lane, where it intersects with Green Street, we believe we've already addressed that. It's, it's it, it now has, the water is diverted to, to a certain area that holds it. And if the grade of Farmview Lane is, is kept up, we believe that we've remedied that problem. Lot, lot two itself has a few smaller issues that need to be addressed in order to be completed, mostly due to the timing of it. We've had a very wet spring, we had a very wet winter, a wet spring, and then there's some, some of the plantings have been delayed for the, for the landscaper, so kind of weather-related delays. But so as we addressed all those issues, we came, you know, my client's conclusion is that we, we are very, very close. We'd like to get the release for lot number two. And we'd like to get a release of the performance covenants. So in our submission to, to the board and, and to Martha, we provided a letter from Eric Botterman from Millennium. And we provided a letter from McCarthy Landscaping. They're the ones that are going to be doing the work. Which indicate a little bit less than twenty-nine thousand dollars would, would, would cover it. The, the breakdown is remaining site work and landscaping is twenty-two thousand one hundred. The final site and as-built survey for Millennial would be about five thousand. And based on our conversations with Martha and Joe at the site, we thought a ten percent buffer would, would be adequate. Or they felt ten percent would be adequate. So we added ten percent in there, which would be twenty-seven hundred. That brings us to a total estimate of about twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. My client would like to suggest that a thirty thousand dollar bond would be sufficient to protect both the town, the neighbors, the homeowners, and provide for adequate protection to, to finish out the project. It's, it's our intent to finish it, make it look nice. Don't think the bond is going to come into play at all, but that is, that is the ultimate protection for the town would be the bond. So tonight, tonight before he is a request for a release of lot number two and a, an approval of a thirty thousand dollar bond to release the performance covenants.
All right, thank you, Bill. Martha, have we heard from Joe with regards to the projected bond value or cost?
Yes, we have. He went out to the site this morning and I received a letter from him this afternoon, which was forwarded to all the board members. I'd be happy to read it. I've got it here if you'd like. But in, in summer, he, he said the recommended bond amount of thirty thousand would appear appropriate to ensure completion of this work and submission of the past old plan.
Okay, great. Let me see if there are any questions from board members at this time. Larry, any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mary, any questions?
No, Peter, I don't have any.
All right, Woody?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks, Peter.
Okay, and Scott?
None, Pete.
Okay, Street and Steve?
None, thank you.
Okay, all right. Martha, is there also a draft form in covenant release which we just received that still need to be reviewed?
I did receive those from Nicole in Bill's office this afternoon. I noticed a few typos, unfortunately, but they, you know, it needs to be reviewed more thoroughly by, excuse me, by us before I think they're, they're ready for signature. Obviously, the board needs to to agree to the, the proposed amount of the performance bond and we would need to have that in hand before the releases were actually signed.
Okay, I'm wondering if a site visit might not be a, a good idea since some of our members haven't been able to see this prior to the release of the performance covenant and approval of the thirty thousand dollar bonds. Let me just kind of see how folks might feel about that. Scott, how would you feel about a site visit?
I'd be okay with that. It's just.
Okay, great. Mary?
Definitely need a site visit.
Okay, great. Woody?
Yes, good suggestion.
Okay, and Larry?
Yes.
Okay, great. I think that maybe we should, I'll look at a date to do that, just so everybody has a good handle of what's going on with this project. So that, that can give us a little bit of direction. So when might that be a good opportunity before we can maybe bring this over for a final action? I'm open to suggestions on calendars. Martha?
Yeah, I think it would be and Bill said that the lot two is scheduled to close early May, so you know, wondering if, if the site walk could be held before the next, the next meeting, which is scheduled for May first.
Okay.
This could be essentially wrapped up.
Okay, we want to try to look at doing something next week, folks. And should I throw something out? Is there, are there any days or times that are, would be a conflict for anyone?
I, I would have a problem with Thursday morning next week.
Okay, so Thursday, the twenty-fifth, what, would be a conflict. Anyone else have any other conflict times?
I only have Monday and Tuesday available.
Monday and Tuesday available. All right, let's, let's look at, how does Tuesday, the twenty-third look?
Pete, I'm unfortunately out of pocket all next week until Friday, but I could you know, swing by independently of everybody else this Friday. And, and let you just, you know, provide any comment that I may have.
Okay, well, let me just throw this out. How does Friday, the twenty-sixth look for folks? Is, is that a conflict? Or is everybody, would that work for most folks? Martha, I know that you're, you're floating holiday day. Does that work?
I've got a couple of things scheduled for that day, but I can, you know, depending on what time, it could be after between eleven and one thirty, I think. Let me just still check. Yeah, between eleven and one thirty or else after, after about three thirty.
Would after three thirty work for folks? Now, everybody has the, pretty much the full day that we don't have to mess around with schedules. We shoot, shoot for three thirty?
Three thirty works great for me.
That's fine for me.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let's go for Friday, the twenty-sixth at three thirty for a site walk. I'm just going to type that in right now, so I don't mess that up. And that's the twenty-six and three thirty. It's going to be fifteen thirty. Okay, wonderful. Mike, does that work on your end?
Yes, I can be there at three thirty on Friday.
One, wonderful, wonderful. Do we want to then look at maybe getting this back onto our agenda? Martha, should I leave that up to you to, to coordinate the follow-up with this?
Yeah, I mean, I think tentative, we can, we can get it on the May first agenda.
All right, then let's, let's plan on doing that, folks. Very good. Any, any other comments or questions?
No.
So May twenty-sixth, three thirty.
At three thirty, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Bill, Mike, you, you good?
Yes, I just, I'm not sure if you should be continuing our request tonight to the May first meeting.
I just asked Martha that and she said that we, we can probably put that in. This is not a public hearing. This would just be a continuation of our discussion, from my understanding then.
Okay.
Right. So that, that's our target, Bill.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
That works for you, Bill?
Yeah, we can, Mike, that, that'll cover us for our closing. If we're, yep, very good.
I mean, most of it, and I think most of the work will probably be completed by the time you guys make the visit too, so it'll be good.
That'd be great.
Beautiful. All right.
Well, Mike.
Very good. All right, then let's continue on with our our agenda. Under all business, discussion regarding the public comment segment of our, our meetings. So Martha, where are we with the suggested positions between the FinCom and the, and what's been sent off to town council?
So I, the FinCom actually puts a copy of their public comment policy at the end of the agenda, so I pulled that out and redlined it to make it appropriate for planning board to send that off to town council for review. And I'm waiting to hear back from her as to whether, you know, she, she feels that this is, this is the appropriate model for the planning board. You know, I think it's consistent with discussions we had. It was, I think she had recommended that we add some language, making it clear that public comment on public hearing matters can only take place during the public hearing. But I think I understand there's some question about that. So that's something that we'll confirm with her. But I don't know if anybody had any, any comments or a chance to review this and any, any thoughts or comments on it.
Let me see if that, that is the case. Larry, any thoughts or comments?
No, it seemed to cover all bases to me. I'd just be interested to see if town council has any suggestions.
Okay, great. Mary, thoughts?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, great. Woody?
Nope, seems good. So we'll see what town council says.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, Larry's and what he's camp, so we'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And Stevie, you have the same opinion?
No, I actually had a slightly different opinion about the the way public comment could be made, particularly only for the first part, which seemed to be the general public comments where you know, people could come in at the beginning of the meeting, if that's when it was held, and say what they had to say to the planning board. My understanding or my thinking was based upon my understanding of the Supreme Judicial Court's ruling last year about how the public could say just about anything during public comment period. So I thought that if a person had a comment about something that's going to come up later on during public hearing, but it was something that was somehow connected to that, they should be allowed to make that comment since there's no discussion about the comment being made until the formal public hearing begins. But they could put the idea out there. Part of my thinking is, let's say you have four or five people that had come to the meeting. And at the beginning, someone makes a comment about something that is to come, well, those people might become informed too. And we have a chance to be thinking about things for when the agenda item came up later. So I may not be saying that as clearly as I like, but I can certainly follow up with Martha and Martha, I'm sure we'll be talking to town council. But certainly you are, so I'm open to hearing too. Again, it really goes back to this SJC saying, you can say anything you want during public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, let's do this. Let's get direction from, from council as to how we should, how we should navigate this. I think that makes the most sense.
Sure.
Okay, all right. So I think that's where we're going, Martha, with that. Let me see. Is there anything else that we need to talk about on our agenda for this evening?
I think we've covered everything. We did the ASR reports, director's report minutes. I think that's it.
All right. Well, folks, I appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. And with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Pete. Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Larry, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I see none. Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And feel better. Scott?
Yes.
All right, Mary?
Yes, thanks a lot.
All right, and Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
All right, I vote as well. Thanks, Steph, very much, and everybody have a good evening.